All rise. Oh yea, oh yea, oh yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Thank you and good morning. You may be seated at this time. First thing I would like to do for you to do is to check your cellular devices to make sure that they don't go off during these proceedings. As the deputy says, silence is commanded. And I would hate for them to have to gather your device because it went off during these proceedings. I've asked you to be seated at this time as we get ready for our invocation and our inspiration. And our inspiration will come from our friends off Cambridge who we worship with and been with for a while now. In fact, ever since I've been a commissioner for a little over nine years. And they come to us every year, especially during their celebration. I wasn't able to make it this time, but I'm not gonna miss too many more. So I invite you now to come to the podium, alright? And when you get ready to signal for your final prayer with all of us, if you will let us know so then we can have him stand, alright? And then after standing and having the prayer, then we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag by Commissioner Farrell. Floor is yours.
Om. Yo, shanti rantharikshagoo, shanti prithvi. Shanti rappa, shanti roghajaya, shanti. Vanasvathaya, shanti visvadeva. Shanti brahma, shanti sarvadhu. Shanti, shanti reva, shanti shaama.
Shanti redi. Jatoyata samihasetatonno abayam kuru. Sannah kuru prajavyo bayannah pasuvya. Viswani deva savirtaduritani parasuva. Jatbadranthanna asuva. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Susanti rbhavatu. Sarvarishtra shanti rbhavatu.
Translation of what was just sung, om. May we all be protected, may we all be nourished, may we work together with great energy. May our intellect be sharpened, let there be no animosity among Let there be no animosity amongst us. Om, peace in me, peace in nature, peace in the divine forces. Unto heaven be peace. Unto sky and the earth be peace. Peace be unto water. Unto herbs and trees be peace. Unto all the gods be peace. Unto Brahma and unto all be peace. And may we all realize the peace. Om, peace, peace, peace. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner, for having us here for this prayer again. As you all might know, earlier this week, we celebrated Diwali. It's also known as the Festival of Lights. It's India's biggest and most celebrated holiday. Locally, we had over 200 folks come visit our temple, but globally, over 1 billion people celebrated this occasion. And our organization, BAPS, we celebrate this occasion 130 different locations throughout the country. As you might know, Diwali is a celebration. It's a multi-day celebration. So the third day marks Diwali. It means row of lights. We're celebrating the triumph of good over evil or light over darkness. It is a reminder to dispel inner darkness with light of God's presence. The day after Diwali, the actual Hindu New Year, it's the time for renewal, reflection, and resolution. It is celebrated with anukut, grand offering of various different vegetarian foods, items, to show gratitude towards God. This celebration is marked by brilliant lights, vibrant traditions, and family gatherings. So through the Hindu organization, BAPS, and its lineage of spiritual leaders, we can aim to achieve peace through the vibrance of our manders and teachings in more than 3,800 locations globally. In addition to the Renan Swaminarayana Akshadham complexes in New Delhi and Gandhinagar in India, one at home here in Robbinsville, New Jersey, as we had shown you that video of that structure. He has gifted us the world with 1,200 manders, with 133 being in North America. Currently, the UAE in the Middle East, the first ever Hindu mandir has been built. Our current spiritual leader, His Holiness Mahan Swami Maharaj, visited North America in 2017 and made an unforgettable lasting positive impact on everyone, devotees and non-devotees alike. On September 5th, 2017, His Holiness Mahan Swami Maharaj met with former President Barack Obama in Washington, DC. The meeting was arranged as part of Mahan Swami Maharaj's effort in North America to share universal Hindu messages and foster public dialogue and services and the importance of unity, communities, and in our nation. Mahan Swami Maharaj greatly values unity in all of the building blocks of society, including families. Locally, our temple here falls under District 6, so we have had great support from Commissioner Wiley, as well as the commissioner overall supporting all of our activities. So we really appreciate that. And we constructed the temple in 2004 with an average of 400 weekly devotees. Phase 3 of gymnasium facility was just recently completed in two years. Our sister arm, BAPS Charities, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit sister organization of BAPS. BAPS Charities harnesses the efforts and collective spirit of volunteerism around the world to serve individuals, families, communities in five key areas. Community empowerment, educational service, environmental protection and preservation, health and wellness, and humanitarian relief. Few of our annual activities occur. Our walk-a-thons with national beneficiaries and health fairs. So in Savannah, we've been doing the walk-a-thon for more than seven years. And our local charity last year was the Ronald McDonald House, and this year was the Low Country Down Syndrome Society. So with this, we want to leave with an imparting message of this year's Diwali theme was unity. That we have to have unity in the world. We're one big family across cultures and borders. Unity brings peace and progress. We have to have unity in the community. Communities that shine the brightest when we help, forgive, and stand together through challenges. We have to have unity at home. Family unity goes through listening, supporting, and respecting one another. And lastly, that unity starts with us. Lasting unity begins within when our actions, values, and purpose align. So we'd like to end today, we'd like to offer Bhagwan Swaminarayana, that we have this lasting unity as well as peace throughout the world. We'd like to have everybody stand up for this last prayer. From ignorance, lead me to truth. From darkness, lead me to the light. From death, lead me to immortality. Om, peace, peace, peace.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farrell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And again, we say thank you. And we thank you for inviting us to all your celebrations and all your church services, your worship services. We truly enjoy when we be there. And we will be coming more times than none. Just so happens that this past week, my schedule was out of here. Just like it will be next week, beginning Sunday. So again, we say thank you. And I'm glad that you are having us stand together as your prayer of unity, because unity is what we need in this community. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
Next year, we invited everybody should be there, okay?
All right, all right. Good, good. Exactly. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, Vice Chairman, District 3.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, Chairman, Pro-Town, District 2.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District 1.
Here.
Patrick K. Farrell, District 4.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District 5.
Present.
Erin Whiteley, District 6.
Here.
Dean Kickleiter, District 7. Marcia Buford, District 8.
Here.
All right. At this time, we turn it over to Commissioner Milton, who will introduce our youth commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. It's an exciting day when I can introduce the youth commissioners. Today, we have two. And our first one is Leilani Singleton, who's been here before. She's a junior at Woodville Tompkins. And she's studying to be a nurse practitioner. And that's a good thing about Woodville Tompkins. They have those career classes for you, that you can get a little bit of what you're interested in. And then we have Jovell Hankerson. She is a junior at Calvary. And this is a good place for her because she's interested in political science. So I want y'all to just take, just pay attention. And if you got any questions, raise your hand. We'll be ready to give you an answer, okay? Thank you.
Again, let me extend welcome to you and ask you to be a part of these proceedings, right? If you would just raise your hand and cut your mics on over there. Then if I don't see you, one of the commissioners will bring it to my attention that we get you. Because we definitely want for you to take a part in what's going on, all right? Let us now go to our proclamations and special presentations. And at this time, I'm going to call those from the retired educators. If you'll come to the podium. All right, good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
The County of Chatham, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 2nd, 2025, as Retired Educators Day in Georgia. And whereas there are more than 145,000 retired educators in Georgia, 34,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Education Association. And whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and most invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designed for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now therefore, our Chester Ellis Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the day of November 2nd, 2025, as Retired Educators Day in Chatham County. And I call upon to observe that they, in appreciation of the manner and honor of retired educators are deserved. And witness whereof, I have here to set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia, to be affixed this 24th day of October, 2025. The mic is yours, whoever wants to speak.
Good morning.
The proclamation is there, isn't it?
It is.
Okay, all right.
Good morning. On behalf of our President, Dr. Kathy West, who is absent this morning, Dr. Brenda Roberts, Ms. Letha Moore, Ms. Deborah Brown, and myself, Dr. Pamela West, President-elect for the Chatham area, retired teachers in this particular area, we would like to thank each of you for your time in all that you did in preparing this wonderful proclamation. We take it as an honor. And just know that we are still out working, doing the best that we can to make sure that each of the students and the students get better services through resources and support throughout the year. And just thank you.
We thank you all for the job that you do. And I know sometimes it goes unsaid. Thank yous go unsaid to you. And appreciation is not a shown to you. I know because I'm a part of that, you know, who do things, but folks don't really know we do, what we do. But those of us who, we do it out the love we have for our community. And we just thank you and ask you to continue. And if you would turn around and face the clock and face the camera for me and hold the proclamation up, all right? So that she can get our still shot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. At this time, I'm going to call on Jim Collins, who will come and give us an update on SPOLOST 8 campaign.
Thank you, Chairman Ellis, members of the commission. I'm Jim Collins. I'm an engineer with Thomason-Hutton. But my other full-time job for the last 60 days has been chairing the Citizens for Progress, which is a Savannah area Chamber of Commerce committee that was set up to advocate for SPOLOST 8. We kicked off the campaign in mid-August. Happy to say we've done well with our fundraising. This is all through private sources. We had a press event to kick off the campaign. September 17th, Chairman spoke there. And since that time, we've spoken to approximately 25 civic and professional groups about the benefits of the SPOLOST 8 campaign and the specific projects that we have on there. In addition to that, we've had 15 newsletter placements and six local media placements. We had a press event at Hull Park, where we had some big drainage pipes behind us. Mr. Kegler was there, representing the county, and we had great press coverage for that. Early voting started October 14th, and the actual date of the referendum will be November 4th. I'd like to thank the Public Information Office for Chatham County, which has been great. As you guys know, you can't, elected officials and governmental agencies can't directly advocate for SPOLOST. That's what we do. But they do have a lot of information about the current SPOLOST list and the previously completed projects. What we've done with the campaign, we've had mailers go out. Here's an example of one. Where we speak at professional and civic organizations, we hand out palm cards, which has a QR code, which will take you to the Vote Yes SPOLOST website, which describes the projects that are on the list. And we also have a map that shows the projects throughout the county. And as you can see, if you look at this map, I know it's hard to see. If you go to the website, it's a great distribution of projects. We did some early polling. And no surprise, the biggest concern amongst the voters was drainage. There's a lot of drainage projects on this list. In addition to some pretty transformative, potentially transformative road projects, a lot of road widening projects in West Chatham, Benton Boulevard, Quaco Road, Little Neck Road, and my personal favorite, the railroad overpass on President Street. Again, I do want to thank the commissioners for what you guys have done. It's a great list in the work that you've done with the other municipalities. They've been very cooperative. I believe the City of Savannah, Poole, and Port Wentworth has their own website with the projects on there. I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have about the campaign so far.
All right, questions, anyone? Commissioner Farrell?
No question. I just want to give a shout out to Jimmy in the chamber for letting everybody know what's out there so that the voters are informed and understand what their options are. And I just want to show my appreciation. And thank you for dedicating 60 days of your life running around to all the organizations in Chatham County. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Go ahead, Commissioner Whiteley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mr. Collins, for that update. I just wanted to say, you know, for public consumption. Well, first, let me ask, do y'all have a website or something that kind of shares the project lists? We do, Commissioner Whiteley. It's votyesplos.com. And I've got a palm card here. I can give it to you. It's got a QR code that'll direct you to the website. And, yeah, absolutely. I want to just say for public consumption, I encourage everybody to go take a look at that list. Because, you know, I'm looking at the county's list alone, and there's a little something for everybody in this, in every field, every space, from drainage, education, housing. But also, I want to just encourage those who live in the various municipalities in the county to take a look at their city's list as well, to see it. Don't just guess. Don't just scroll on social media and take somebody else's word for it. I want to encourage everybody to go and look at the list for yourself to make sure that what you hope to see is there. Thank you. Of course.
Anyone else? Thank you for what you're doing, all right? And we look forward to having success.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At this time, let me call upon the manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm going to ask our HR team to come to the podium as we recognize various county employees for their years of service to this community.
Good morning.
All right, good morning.
Our employees that are receiving service awards this morning have a total of 225 years of service. Words can't express our appreciation for all that you do for Chatham County citizens. But we're hoping that a small token of appreciation is acceptable for you. With 25 years of service, Ms. Dionne Lloyd. With 25 years of service, Ms. Sharon Johnson. With twenty-five years of service, Ms. Sharon Johnson. Twenty years of service, Lieutenant Angelina Jackson Broom. Twenty years of service, Edgar Young. Twenty years of service, Dwayne Peet. The following employees have fifteen years of service, Mr. Ronald Borchum. Ms. Stacy Thomas with Parks and Recreation. Mr. Tony Grant with the Detention Center. The following employees have ten years of service, Mr. Jeremy Strickland. Ms. Eureka Collins with the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Jared Nelson with ICS. Richard Penvin with the Operations. And these employees have five years of service, Ms. Bassina Smalls. Ms. Pamela Roundtree. Mr. Michael Sarhat, Director for CNT.
Oh, sorry.
It broke the camera.
There we go. Doesn't want to focus. I'm sorry.
Ali Sabataskin.
All right, got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our last three employees with five years of service are with the Detention Center, Ms. Tequila Byers. Ms. Natasha Oliver. And Ms. Taisha Simmons.
To all the team in Chatham, let me thank you for the job that you do, for the work that you do, uh, that makes Chatham County works on one accord, and we are so grateful for that. Also, let me recognize our chief deputies here. I didn't see any other constitutional officer. All right, we don't have any chairman's items, no commissioner items. We go to no table items. Items for individual actions to request bold approval of the following budget amendments and transfers. FY twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, appropriate fund balance and transfer funds to department budget as shown in, uh, attachment one for A, the general fund, five hundred and ninety-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. B, the street lighting fund, six thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. C, the E nine-one-one fund, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. The restricted court fee fund, one thousand fifty-four dollars. The sewer fee fund, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. And the welfare, F, the welfare fund, uh, wellness fund, I'm sorry, one million two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. B, approve the enter departmental budget transfer as shown in attachment one for the general fund, the E nine-one-one fund, the restricted court fee fund, the emergency rental assistant fund, the special service district fund, the capital improvement fund, the capital replacement fund, and the wellness fund. Three, increased revenues and expenditures, three hundred and fifty-three thousand eighty dollars as shown in attachment one for the hotel motel tax fund. Four, increased revenue and expenditure as listed in attachment two as for the general fund, two million five hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. B, the E nine-one-one fund, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. And five, transfer funds between projects as listed in the attach, the alternate one below for sales tax and local fiscal recovery fund, sales tax four funds, sales tax five fund, and sales tax six funds. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the confiscated SS fund, appropriate fund balance, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to increase CNT's SOS operation budget, two. And the multi-grant fund, A, increased revenues and expenditures, sixty-one thousand thirty-six dollars for the work readiness enrichment program grant, increased revenues and expenditures, one hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the USD DOJ COPS School Violence Prevention Grant. And, um, C, increased revenues and expenditures, three hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars for the United US Department of Homeland Security Port Security Program Grant. Three, in the sales tax seven fund, increased Splosh revenues, five million dollars to establish a fire department capital outlet project. Four, in the capital improvement program fund, transfer three million five hundred dollars from contingency to the CEMA building project. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve, uh, as read.
Properly motion is second that we approve the request of, of budget transfers. Are you ready for the question? Please signify by casting your votes. Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to call on Chief Hadley.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I just wanted to, um, uh, welcome everybody and look forward to presenting. Today is going to be a little more focused on some of our larger cases that we've, uh, investigated over the last three, three months or so. And I, what I wanted to do is just highlight the good work that the men and women from the Chatham County Police Department have undertaking, undertaken, um, uh, most recently and really kind of frame, uh, some of the challenges that they have and really what they're exposed to on a day-to-day basis. I think it's, uh, somewhat easy for all of us to kind of go through our day and we do this and we respond to that and, and whatnot. But at the end of the day, these young men and women really, uh, uh, confront a lot of challenges and a, and a lot of, uh, community dynamics as they're out there doing the work. And I wanted to, uh, extend my appreciation for, for everything that they do. You know, first and foremost, uh, two thousand twenty-five year crime to date, we've had a very good year this year relative to crime. Um, our robberies are down nineteen so far in two thousand twenty-five. Our gun assaults and non-domestics have decreased. Our total violent crime is down by eleven percent, um, from this time last year. Our auto thefts and thefts from autos are both down in two thousand and twenty-five. Our total property crimes are down fifteen percent, and our total crimes are down fourteen percent from two thousand and twenty-four. A lot of good work, not only by the department, but also the community, um, who are our partners out there as we do our work every day. This just reflects the, uh, the, the numerical number of crimes and, and the particular beats, the districts, uh, that y'all represent. Uh, certainly the west side, uh, is a little more, uh, heavy on crime than the east side. This map represents, um, our community outreach on a day-to-day basis that our officers get out of their cars, they engage the community. We like to reflect that by mapping it. Um, this, I'm sure this doesn't capture all of it, um, but there's fourteen hundred and thirty-seven citizen contacts that we were able to capture within our, uh, system, uh, that our officers do out there every day. So certainly spread across unincorporated Chatham County. That's what we encourage, that's what we're about, uh, maximizing positive human contact. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, creates better relationships and makes us all safer, uh, in a variety of ways. So again, a lot of, uh, thanks to the officers that do that every single day. I wanted to, uh, talk about, and this has been covered in, in the media extensively, but, uh, uh, a shooting that we had at Westlake, uh, back in March, that was, uh, also tied to a homicide back in July two thousand twenty-four with some of the same players. A lot of hard work went into this case. It's very complex, a, a lot of people, a lot of, uh, players involved. Um, it, that means going through social media, uh, listening to jail calls. Uh, thanks to the Sheriff's Office for providing us the opportunity to, um, go through that, uh, that evidence, so to speak. You have to look, listen to it minute by minute. Uh, so these detectives sit there for hours upon hours, um, going through, um, jail calls and, and all the other, um, information that they're able to, um, collect, cell phone data, things of that nature. It's very painstaking, it's very tedious, but at the end of the day, um, we were able to make, um, arrests of three subjects, uh, in the homicide, uh, John Jtwan Reed, Jamon Reed, and Tyree King. And then also connected to the Westlake shootings, uh, Jamon Reed, which you see the same name, uh, Jaden Green, Yusef Jenkins, and Cleveland Dunham. So again, I wanted to highlight that, that is an extensive amount of work, um, and to bring justice really, not really, but to the mother of the victim there, um, at two-on-four-ninety-five. As a reminder, there was two young children in that vehicle, there was over seventy rounds, um, shot there at that intersection. Um, it was less than a half an inch. Um, there was a, a round that went through a car seat, uh, missed the child. Uh, one child did get grazed in the head, um, so you're talking about millimeters and we could have had a, a more of a tragedy than what it already was. So, um, again, a lot of, a lot of good work went into that and I wanted to highlight that. Uh, we did have an infant homicide arrest, um, five-month-old Liam Rice suffered a fractured skull, brain bleed and other assorted injuries. Uh, the investigation determined that injuries were the result of child abuse. Those are very complex investigations, um, because sometimes it's not clearly evident. Uh, when we get called, medics come, they transport the child to the hospital, um, there's a lot of technical, medical, uh, evidence that we have to collect to determine, uh, that abuse happened, um, and things of that nature. So a lot of work went into that, um, before an arrest could be made. And so, uh, a lot of, a lot of credit goes to, um, the detective relative to that. And think of the, the human impact that has on those officers or that officer investigating that crime. This is a young child, you know, you can't help but feel, uh, and have emotions about those investigations and it impacts you. Um, so again, that's, that's something that they endure, uh, for the good of justice and I appreciate, uh, the work that they do. Uh, we did have a stabbing in West Gateway in August. Uh, uh, the victim was stabbed multiple times, suspect located on Bush, Bush Road, and then, uh, patrol, uh, arrested the individual immediately. Um, obviously Gateway has, you know, for all intent and purposes, has been a little problematic for it, but we're out there, we're present, um, our homeless liaison, officers out there continuously. So we do, we put a lot of time, energy, and effort into that location, uh, and a lot of good work does get done, um, to the extent that we can. Uh, we had three, we had interim autos, auto arrests, you know, auto, auto thefts from autos is one of our highest numbers by way of, uh, part one crimes, if you were look at, at the charts. Uh, and one suspect could go out and do twenty or thirty a night. They're trying car doors, uh, looking for them a lot. And I say that, um, they're not easily, they're not easily caught, um, but we, uh, put a lot of effort in, into, uh, what we do and we were able to make, uh, some arrests, uh, relative to that on September eleventh, um, Cuaco Road, and then on Diamond Causeway, um, we arrested the, uh, associated individuals. So again, a lot of hard work, a lot of good work by patrol, uh, and really appreciate their efforts relative to that. We've, uh, one thing that is, uh, becomes clear every week is the amount of fraud that, uh, financial fraud that occurs not only in Chatham County but elsewhere, and you could probably Google it and, and find many cases. Um, scammers posed, uh, as Representative Wells Fargo, they made it, uh, who made an eighty-nine-year-old, uh, uh, woman believe Russian hackers were getting access to her account. They tricked her into liquidating her savings and giving it to them for safekeeping, an amount totaling six hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which included cashier's checks and gold coins. That's one person. That's one person. Um, fortunately, um, we were able to, uh, intervene when I believe her son, who was monitoring some of her accounts, um, contacted us. Uh, she had already set up a time for them, for an individual to return to Savannah, fly into Savannah, meet with her. She was to give this individual, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in gold coins, um, as a transfer. We were able to arrest the individual, Mr., I'm not going to say that right, I was going to say Mr. Berea, um, so we were able to arrest that individual. We got, uh, the feds involved, Homeland Security, uh, there's, he's been a lot of places all over the country, um, acting as an intermediary between probably a much larger criminal network. So, um, it, it, it is prevalent, it's here, um, and it's, people need to be aware. So in, in, uh, response to that, we've set up a, a scam awareness workshop. Um, we'll have the first one next Thursday, November sixth, uh, or I'm sorry, the following Thursday after next Thursday at six-thirty at Bible Baptist Church. Um, we'll put a lot of advertisements out. We're also, this isn't going to be the only time we have it, but this will be the first time we have it. Um, and people that are, um, victims, these are smart people, these are accomplished people, um, and it can happen to anyone. Um, and particularly, they seem to target the elderly. Uh, so those of you that are caretakers or monitor, uh, perhaps your parents or someone in your life, um, you monitor their finances, um, this would be something for you to attend, um, to, uh, just, just to be aware and make sure that, uh, they don't, uh, play, uh, are victims of this crime. So it's, it's, it's very prevalent. Um, as you said, that we've had a hundred and eighty-seven victims of fraud so far this year, and they're not small sums of money. Um, they get into Bitcoin, they get into cryptocurrency, there's a lot of complex scams out there. So just wanted to, uh, let the public beware. In the last, um, slide, uh, we had a, a machete attack, uh, out at Walmart where an employee pushed a coworker to the ground. He was having a, a, a mental health episode and attacked her or, or threatened her with two machetes. He actually did not injure her with it, but he had machetes in his hand. And, um, in looking at the body camera footage, and this is what I was trying to, uh, explain where, what officers confront, when that officer entered the Walmart and you saw the view from his body camera, the subject was standing over top of this lady who was petrified with two machetes. Now that easily, very easily could have been an officer-involved shooting, um, you know, which, which nobody wants, not the officer, certainly not the community. And, um, but this young officer, about twenty-five years old, did a fantastic job, um, getting the subject to drop him, uh, they did get into a physical confrontation with the individual, he didn't bite any officers, it was a struggle. Uh, this is, um, and this is what, uh, the off- This is, and this is what the officer confronted. He did a fantastic job. We're thankful that no one was more injured than they were. And I'm sure the, the employee that was attacked from a, from a mental standpoint, you know, probably wasn't in the best state of mind after that. But I, I say that to say that this is what our officers do on a daily basis. We obviously can't highlight everything. We try to be very judicious and discriminate in what we put out on our social media, not to exploit anything. But I really just wanted to paint a picture of what our officers do on a weekly and daily basis because they really do a fine job. We're not perfect, we're human beings, we're going to make mistakes. We may fall short from time to time, but these young men and women really do a good job. They listen to their training and they try to do what's best for the community. And without any, any further ado, I'll take any questions, anyone?
All right, questions from anyone? Commissioner Whitley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really just wanted to just make a couple of statements to Chief. One, I want to first thank you. In the past month or so, we had a pretty newsworthy incident, if you will, that was very contentious. And I want to just thank you for your candor and, and when we had the opportunity to sit down and talk about it, I really appreciate, you know, your perspective. And I appreciate, you know, what our officers are doing and the tough challenges that we're faced with overall. So first of all, second of all, I want you to know that again, my favorite slide is that citizen contact slide, you know, to show that we are making an effort to just be community, making an effort to just get to know people in the community. Shows that policing is more than just locking somebody up.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that wholeheartedly. And then the last thing, I want to thank, you know, our police department for their efforts out on the gateway. I know that we're doing what we can. The gateway is a multi-jurisdictional effort. So anybody who may have issues, I encourage you not only to call me, but to call our city friends as well. And I know that, that corridor just has a lot going on. You, you showed the scene from the shooting. The question I had, rumor has it that a homeless person pulled one of the children out of that vehicle, like right as the shooting was taking place or something like that. Did you ever hear anything?
I think you're right. Now that you mention it, it didn't strike me. It's because it's been a while, but I do believe that when that incident occurred prior to our arrival, that one of the homeless people grabbed one of the children out of the car seat to make sure they were okay. Obviously, they were crying, it was a hectic scene, but, but they did.
Yeah, well, it's unfortunate that it took place and, you know, I, you know, when we talk about what our guests who shared their prayer with us today, it was about unity in the world, unity in the community, unity in the home. And, you know, even though we might not always see eye to eye on things, you know, humanity is humanity. And so I just want to kind of echo that. And again, thank you all for your work. I know it's not easy. I know that now is a trying time and I just want to urge the, the public to give our police officers and all of our first responders some grace because there's definitely a lot of interesting situations going on in our world.
Yes, sir.
And we all want our community to be safe, but y'all are the ones on the front line. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Milton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo the sentiments. It's a hard, tough job. And, and you two are four speaking at Gateway next week. Is it that next week the fair starts? So you're going to have a lot of traffic out there. So y'all just be careful.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll be prepared.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm just looking back to when this, this latest version of the Chatham County Police got restarted and you were chosen to be the police chief. And I am just really pleased at how the police department stood itself up, how it's been led, how it's been trained, and what great results we're having in the unincorporated area. So keep up the good work. Just want to praise you and your officers for what they're doing and, and reaching out to the community like we talked about on day one because ninety-nine and a half percent of everybody in the unincorporated area are dependent on you to protect them. They're not the problem. They're the reason that we have a great county police force. And, you know, it shows when the officers interact with citizens, get their feedback, give a pulse of what's going on in their community. And I, I think it leads to better policing and better results. And it all starts at the top. And thank you and continue to do the great leadership job you've done for Chatham County.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Lockett?
Chief?
Sir?
First of all, as we move closer toward Christmas.
What you get me for Christmas, Commissioner? That's what I want to know. All right, I'll take that. I'll take that.
A smile.
All right, well, that's, that's.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
But we want to let you know that you all are doing a very good job and we, for making Chatham County a safe and secure Chatham. So I would thank you for that and keep up the good work.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chief. I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With our elderly and some of those who have been defrauded, what does that look like as far as? I know that some may have smaller amounts of money that have been compromised and they may not necessarily feel comfortable or embarrassed about reaching out.
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what does our messaging look like for those individuals who have probably less financial impactful situations, although still impactful? What do, how do we tell those citizens to address those matters?
Well, first and foremost, we need to know. Don't be embarrassed. Understand being embarrassed, but that we don't know what we don't know. And it may be something that they can tell us about their experience that, that gives us something to investigate, connect some dots and hold some people accountable. So what I would, we need to know whether it be a small amount, large amount, we need to know. You know, we work closely again with the feds. They have a lot of technology and a lot of resources that we, we may not have at the local level. So we work very closely with them trying to, you know, one, determine who may be responsible, but there may be ways for us to capture that money where it may be being held, Bitcoin being one, in a, in a certain account before it's transferred, transferred somewhere else. So the sooner we know, you know, speed is our friend. And so if we're able to know that a crime just occurred or a fraud just occurred, we may be able to save that person or, or capture some of that money back for that individual, work with the banking institution, whatever the case may be. So. And just on note, with the previous case that I mentioned, we were able to find where this, the person that we arrested went to another state, found a location where that person was at and found a victim who had not reported because they were so embarrassed.
Yeah.
And they lost one point five million dollars.
Yeah, I can imagine. That's crazy.
It, it happens and people, yes, people are embarrassed. They may not even want to tell their family.
Yeah.
You know, or their kids or whatnot because they're so devastated and they're so embarrassed that they don't, you know, they don't want to confront that. But we may be able to recover some of that if we know. If we can do that, at least it gives you something back in the midst of a real tragedy.
And my follow-up question is, so do we have any way to service those who may feel like they're potentially a victim of fraud? Like say, for instance, someone receives some information that they question. Do we have the resources to address that type of situation or?
I believe we do. I, I don't think, at least so far, the volume hasn't been insurmountable. So I think that we've been able to be very attentive to those. I think the banking institutions are creating certain, how do I want to put it, business practices where they're flagging large withdrawals. Even the, yeah, some of the Bitcoin ATMs, they have notices on the screen. Are you sure, basically, are you sure you want to do this? You can back out of the transaction. There's like multiple ways to kind of pause the activities that you're doing. At the end of the day, people will, you know, can do it. But I think there's a lot of things that are being put in place in the private sector and the banking institutions that flag accounts, flag unusual activity. I think I saw one where a lady had never withdrawn more than like two thousand dollars in the last like twelve years. Then she came in, was trying to withdraw a bunch of money and it obviously caught the attention of the banking institution. They were kind of put a stop to that and then figured out she was being a victim of a fraud and they were able to stop that. So.
Got you.
But I do think that we have the resources and the ability to get resources for people if we know, but we need to know.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
All righty, thank you.
And y'all continue to do your job.
All right.
All right, we go to the action calendar. May I have a motion to accept in its entirety?
Motion to accept the action calendar in its entirety?
Second.
Properly motion and second that we accept the action calendar in its entirety. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, thank you. All right, we go to a first reader. The petitioner, Robert McCorkle, requests rezoning of the subject parcel at two oh nine Shipyard Road from R dash one E O, one family residential to B dash one E O Business Limited for the purpose of bringing a non-conforming landscape business into zoning compliance. MPC file number Z dash zero eight two five dash zero 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 five seven three. PIN number one zero five one seven zero two zero one five. The, the MPC recommends alternate approval, District One. Do we have anyone here who wants to speak on this, make comments about this particular item? We don't have any? All right, we'll take it up at the second reading. We go to our second reading, reader. Speed zone ordinance update. Request the board adopt revisions and approve the update list of roads for the Chatham County. Speed zone ordinance, all districts. Is there a motion? I'm coming, I got it. Is there a motion?
Our second motion.
All right, properly motion and second now. Is there anyone here who wants to make comments concerning the changing of the speed zone ordinance? Any questions from anyone? Hearing none? All right. Or please cast your votes. All right, that turns us over in your hand, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, you should have a, a list of information. I just want to remind the board. We've got updates on COVID vaccines from our health department. Got some information and I want to recognize one of our ICS members, Mr. Scott Craig, our cybersecurity officer, for his award in a live fire exercise that he won first place. And it's a special recognition for him and we want to congratulate him on his success. We've got some updates from the Parks and Recreation Department for your information. Also, I want to remind the board, and you should have a flyer at your desk there on the Chatham County Community Workshop for our electric vehicle infrastructure deployment and training plan. So you've got that flyer in front of you and that's going to be at Savannah Tech Tuesday the twenty-eighth from eleven to two P M. And last on my list, in front of you, you should have, we passed out this morning, a survey as our resiliency staff gets ready to complete our long-range injury plan. We want to get some input from this commission. So that survey is in front of you. If you will take a couple of minutes today and, and fill it out and leave it with us, we'd really appreciate that. So. And then the last thing, we're rescheduling our legislative dinner. It was scheduled to be on the sixth, but, November, but we're, due to a conflict with the delegation, we are going to have to reschedule that. So we'll keep you posted when that new date is established. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Right, yes, sir.
Good question for the manager.
Sure.
So, Mr. Manager, I just wanted to ask if we could look into some ways to potentially support our community's military as well as government workers during the shutdown. They're not getting paid and so
Yes, sir.
with that, if we could maybe kind of make sure we kind of once over some of our agreements. I know we have agreements, MOUs with like second harvest and stuff like that. Want to make sure that we have something in place if necessary to support not only those government employees who live in our community, but also the potential loss of SNAP benefits coming up next month. I think it'd be prudent for us to at least just kind of have an idea of ways that we could direct people to resources in some way. So if it's not too much to ask, if you could.
We'll have, we'll have the team start putting something together, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And, and just for, for information purposes, I'm on my way now to LA. I'll leave Sunday and when I come back, we should have more to deal with the military, all right? Because that's what I'm going for. Okay? So we, others are thinking in the same manner that you're thinking as to how are we going? What do we need to do? Especially when you're out of eighteen thousand, you only have three hundred and forty-seven that lives on the base and the rest outside the base. So we're coming there. Let's go to our youth commissioner.
So I know you already voted on it, but my question is about the second reading. The approval list of the roads for the speed ordinance. What does that
Right.
mean? Like the ordinance? Is that like changing of speed?
We're changing the speed limits on some of the roads, all right? We're finding especially in Commissioner Farrell's district, all right? We need to reduce the speed limit, okay? And, and because there, there is, there is more hazard more. So what the, what the staff did was they looked at our speed limits across all districts and they recommended that we reduce speed in some places and then, believe it or not, we did increase some speed in some places, all right? So that's what they did. And, and they came back with that list, all right? And she don't have access to.
Well, I was going to say if you go online, and we could show you where to find the agenda and stuff online. I'm not sure if the, I believe the agenda packet should be available publicly. And if you go to page two twenty-three.
Do they have agenda packet? All right.
I'll show you how to get to it online. Go to page two twenty-three and then once you scroll from there, you'll see the actual list of all the roads.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. We're just trying to make it safer, all right? And so they did studies. They just didn't come off top of the heads with a list of roads, but they did studies as to the traffic pattern, all right? Even at the time of day of the traffic patterns to make those recommendations to us.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay. Something else I wanted to. Oh, Commissioner Noah Lockett and Farrell, all right? I've asked the manager to set up a town hall meeting for the residents in your area who are, especially those in Isle of Hope and some on Dutch Island, all right? Yeah, okay, so that we could talk to them about the fire attacks, okay? Because some of the, some of the emails I have that they sent to me have misinformation in it, all right? So we got folks out there operating on misinformation. So what we want to do is have the town hall meeting and give them the facts as it relates to, all right? So I've asked them now to set up, so be on the lookout for that. When, and make sure that your timing and their timing is together so that we have you there when we get ready for that, all right? Sounds good to me. Okay. That being all said and done, we do have to have a executive board meeting. And so may I have a motion to recess to executive board session? Litigation.
Personnel.
Litigation and personnel.
Make a motion to recess to executive
And land acquisition, okay.
session for litigation, land acquisition, and personnel.
All right, it's properly motion and second that we recess to executive session. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please cast your votes. All right, we're in recess.